All right, it is 6 o'clock, so we're going to call to order the Bristol-Virginia City Council for August the 27th, 2019. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming out tonight, and we've got a few good things on the agenda that we're going to go over. Looking forward to the quarterly financial report there at the end. And I'm going to make a couple appointments and stuff this evening. One thing I wanted to talk about, we had the ribbon cutting for the Mendota Trailhead on August the 16th, and I appreciate, I think we had, if I had to guess, maybe 75 or 100 people come out for that. So I was really glad to see everybody coming out, and a lot of them actually came out ready to use the trailhead as soon as we got out of the way with the scissors and the ribbon, so that was good, and we had a couple other councilmen here that attended, so that was fantastic. Another thing that I wanted to talk about, and this was me brainstorming the other day, and I'm going to ask the city manager to look into it if possible. We had a lady come a couple weeks ago and talk about the lack of ordinances we have for dogs and whether they're on chains or not and all this, and that kind of snowballed into me thinking about the registration fees that we have for pets. I know that, I went and got the numbers, I had the city clerk help me get the numbers. We're averaging probably $700, $800, $1,000 a year in registration fees for dogs and cats. That's what I said. What did I say?
$100,000.
Oh my god, no.
$100,000?
Seven, there are, there are 12 million dogs in the city.
(Laughter)
No, we're averaging $700 to $1,000 period for these registration fees. And I know, you know, within reason, if you do the math out, that's maybe 300 or 400 dogs and/or cats in the city, and that's not realistic if I had to make a guess with 17,000 people. So I got to thinking about how could we incentivize people to maybe register their animals, because it helps them, they're registered, you know that they've had their rabies shot, you've had their vaccinations, you know, hopefully they're fixed. And I was wondering if there was a way we could look at, if they're registered and they get picked up by the animal control, instead of them having a fee paid, if they're already registered, they all, all they'd have to do is, you know, if they're registered, they don't have to pay a fee, but if they're not registered, they can pay their fee and supplies for the animal shelter. And that would help not only people who don't want to pay the fee, it would also help the animal shelter stay stocked, and in turn, we'd save some money possibly. So that's just something I was brainstorming about, and if you could look at that and see if it's feasible.
Sure.
And I'd really appreciate it, that'd be kind of cool. Has anybody else got anything?
I would say, where you're talking about animals, that they've opened a dog park up at Sugar Hollow, although they have the official grand opening, and I know a few people have seen post pictures online, they've taken advantage of that already, so that's great, and if anybody has a dog, I'd encourage them to go up there and visit the new dog park.
I took mine there, and it was fantastic. You know where, there actually are the people using it, so it was good. City manager comments?
Yeah, I would like to at least make one comment. On, I think it's Friday, August 16th, we had our food truck festival here in the city, and I just wanted to say thanks to Nicole. She did a tremendous job putting all that together, probably had 200 people at least attend that food truck event, and hopefully that's something we can continue on. I think people enjoyed it, and maybe try to do that during the race weeks, and get these food trucks used to come into Bristol, and being a part of the community and helping out here too.
It's easy to get somebody to manage food trucks, you get to sample the food. It's not fair.[304.02][304.02](Laughter)
All right, so Item C, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, I'm a taxpayer. Papulum or substance and content? Which one do you want? Which one do you listen to? How do you define either one of them? What do you do to prepare for them? Papulum or substance and content? I have sat in this room many times and watched as various councils have been given bowls of papulum, and their choice was to either put a spoon in it and eat it, or set it aside. Which do you want? How do you define it? Do you do your homework? Do you know what you're doing? How do you prepare for it? How do you make your decision? What do you base it on? Do you realize that the connectedness of things within the city government, things have to connect? There are all kinds of connections. Few things stand alone. How do you find out what those connections are? Your decisions should be based on that knowledge. Papulum or substance and content? Now, I can tell you a lot about substance and content, I don't deal in papulum. That's not my style. Now, there was a report given by the state of Virginia recently in which they essentially said they no longer have to check on the city of Bristol, Virginia every 30 minutes to see if we're going into bankruptcy, or if we've overspent, or tried to borrow more, or put four Band-Aids on something that only took one. But what the city, what the state did not say was very important. They did not say, "You are all right, you are in good shape, you have a lot of extra money to spend, you have sustained your economy, you have money coming into this city, you can play games, you can do anything you want, spend wishes, wants, and so forth." They did not say that. What they did say was, in so many words, "The city is at least one step ahead of where we were about two years ago," which was a catastrophic level. That's what they said. "We have taken a step, but we are also only about a step and a half away from a catastrophic situation by doing something stupid." Now, there is one word, one word, that this council can use and learn that will save this city and save this council if you learn to use it. That word will be, may I finish my sentence, sir?
Go ahead.
That word will be, in a very few minutes, our chief financial officer is going to give information that will sustain this one word, it will define it, support it, it will be an unarguable issue. One word that this council should learn very quickly and use very often. You can prove the validity right here, you're going to hear it. And that one word is, "No." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have another person signed up, Mr. Carlton, you didn't sign up for non-agenda or a specific item, what were you looking to speak on?
Your honor, Mayor, and the city councilman, staff members, and members of the audience, my name is Earl Carlton, I live at 186 Everett Way in Bristol. In June 2014, I bought a house on Everett Way. The real estate lady, this has nothing to do with you, this particular item, but I asked the real estate what my taxes would be approximately for that price house that I was buying. She gets her smartphone out and does a little flipping, comes back and says it'll be about $1,400 a year, paid twice a year. I said, "I have to pay my taxes twice a year?" She said, "Yeah, but it'll just be about $700," so she clarified that. When I forgot my bill, it was $985 Everett Ave, but that's not the issue here. The issue here is that I asked, "Where do I get my electric turned on?" They told me where the office was for BVU or BUV, whatever it is. I went up there and asked for my electric to be turned on. I was buying a new house. They said, "Well, you have to put up a $200 deposit." I said, "Well, will I get paid interest on it?" They said, "No." I says, "How long do I have to have that deposit in?" And they said, "One year." I says, "Will I get interest on it?" They said, "No." So I obviously gave them $200 interest, and then they start down the list of what my electric would be as far as kilowatt hours per, and all the things I had to pay. I'd have to pay sewer, water, trash pickup, garbage, if you want to call it that. I said, "I don't need that service. I don't want that service." They says, "Well, you don't get electricity then." I asked you, "Is that not bribery? Is that legal? That I cannot have electricity unless I pay for a garbage bill that I don't even use, haven't used, don't intend to use, don't need to use?" So I put my $200 deposit back, and a year later, I went back, asked for my $200 deposit back, they says, "We don't give deposits back." I says, "Well, that's what you didn't tell me a year ago." He says, "We'll give you credit for it." I says, "With interest?" "No, no interest." So I did get credit for the $200 on my electric bills after I went and asked for it. My question is, and I wonder, how many people move into the city of Bristol, has to put up a $200 deposit, and a year later, they are busy as I am, and never go back and ask for it, and never get it? Because if I hadn't went and asked for it, I don't think I would have got it. The, on this garbage pickup, as I say, I've never used it. You brought a can out there. I called City Hall, asked somebody the number, I was new in the area, and they told me that it was issued to my address, and I told them, I says, "I've already paid for it, and I'll just take it with me." He says, "If you do, you'll be cited." Now, they didn't say I'd be arrested, didn't say I'd be taken to court, they said, "Sided." I took that to be, granted, I would be cited to court if I tucked it. That can's a sitting in my garage, I've called and they won't pick it up. I've cleaned cobwebs and dust off of it a time or two, but it's sitting there. I would like to get it out of my garage, because as I say, it's taking up space. In fact, I've got you a bill here for storage for 60 months, I've had it. The street clean, the first year I moved there was clean. The street is very dirty now, it's, gray's going up between the cracks and trash on it, I very seldom sit there, and the street itself is Blevins Boulevard off of Lee Highway, and you know where it is. There's 18-wheeled coming in there, a dozen or two a day, every day, and the road surface is cracked. I've seen them hit the curb, and the curbs are broken in the area where they back into the business places there, and damage's been done, so the streetlights are out, the streetlights out on Blevins, streetlights out on Everett, streetlights out on Olive Road where I walk every day. I would suggest that you get a ball of ribbon and give it to your night, police officers on duty, maybe have them to tie a ribbon around the pole if the light is out. I drive through town at night, I see lights out not everywhere, but it's no problem to, when you stop at a traffic light, or if you're going into a driveway or someplace, parking lot, I see lights out on poles everywhere. When I first moved there, there was no, lights were out, I called City Hall, they said, "Call BVU," and I called there, I got a recording, it said, "I'm either away from my desk or serving a customer, please leave your name and number and call back." That's been over five years ago, and I still haven't gotten a call back. So they, these streetlights are burnt out, and we never, if you, if you, if city is paying the electric company to have streetlights, you're not getting the money. We paid owner taxes to help us. This, about two or three months ago, I had a license plate stolen off of all my vehicles, and I tried to call the police department to report his stolen. I never could.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. But thank you though, we appreciate it. All right, on to the regular agenda. Item one, consider first reading of an ordinance to repeal Section 1 of the Appendix to Chapter 34 of the City Code of Ordinances relating to ambulance fees. Hereby open the hearing, staff comment.
Counsel, this is the first reading of that ordinance, so it's not open in the hearing, it should just be staff comment. So with that, it's, this is the first reading of the ordinance in regards to Section 1 of the Appendix to Chapter 34 of the City Code. This Appendix does not reflect the actual cost of emergency response transported, the level of care provided during transport, and the fire department will adopt an annual fee schedule that reflects these actual costs with final approval given by the city manager. The fire department began emergency transport services in August of 18. A public hearing was held on this matter on August the 13th of 2019, and I would recommend that council repeal this section of the city ordinance.
All right, so no one has signed up for public comment on this, so we would need a motion of second, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I'm looking for a motion of second.
I move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, and do you want to clarify that that's a reading by caption only?
I, that, it's all it is at this point, so.
All right, so first, got a motion of second, is there any discussion? All right, clerk, we'll call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Lum Power.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item two, consider approval of Virginia.
Let me, I'll just read that real quick.
See, you give me a script, and if I'm off the script, I don't know what I'm doing up here.
Being ordained by the City Council for the City of Bristol, Virginia, has repealed Section 1 of the Appendix to Chapter 34 of the City Code of Ordinances related to ambulance fees.
All right, thank you. Item two, consider approval of Virginia Brownfield's Assistance Fund Grant Project, staff report.
I'm going to be doing that one, counsel, thank you. This is related to a grant proposal our department has been working on and would like to submit this week, but we do need authorization from the council to allow the city manager to sign. It is a program through, actually, Virginia Economic Development Partnership in coordination with DEQ, with the state, for Brownfield's assistance, and what we're looking at is a site assessment and planning project, and I want to just give you a little, trying to advance it. A little background, because we've been working in this, or learning, I should say, a little bit more about all the opportunities that the city does have for funding, and Brownfield's redevelopment really needs to be thought of as an economic development strategy for the city, especially a city like other cities in the state that can't expand, always looking at opportunities for redevelopment of older properties. And just to clarify, Brownfield's is not like just a superfund site, Brownfield's can be any older building that has some potential environmental issue like asbestos, which a lot of older buildings have, just from when they were built. So just to clarify that. We have been working with the DEQ Brownfield's Grant Coordinator, who's been very reaching, he's reached out a lot to us, he's actually from southwest Virginia, and he's very helpful in letting us know about grant opportunities. I also was able to attend the Virginia Brownfield's Conference last month and learned what other communities are doing with these funds, and it's pretty exciting to see some of the projects. So we're looking at a few avenues, and this one is the VDP, I'll speak more on, but as far as EPA, they have a Brownfield's Assessment Grant, there's no local match required, it's just to assess, it's not to do any remediation, and we have already gotten, successfully gotten monies for a consultant to do an assessment of the Oak Street School, which is city property, that's scheduled for next month to be done, and we've also submitted for the former Taniva site, Fairview Properties, for this assessment grant, no local match at all required, and we understand its schedule, I'm not sure exactly when it will be done. Those are done by EPA, so it's, to get an assessment done is important to anybody that is either going to be the developer or a potential buyer of a property. A Phase 1 environmental assessment is required by a bank, it's, you know, an asbestos report's required by the building code if you're doing redevelopment, so it's a critical first step, basically. So the VDP program is open now, they just open for applications, and there is a 50/50 match required, you can use previous expenditures on infrastructure, and that's why what led us to doing the project that I'm going to speak about, the Moore Street Building Assessment and Planning Grant. But one other avenue, if you're wondering, you know, what about other properties? We are planning in the fall, when they open up the round, I think it's, I think it's in September. There is a community-wide assessment grant that we can access for multiple sites in the city, so we're going to be looking at other sites that we could do assessments for, and I'll know more particulars on that later next month, I think. I guess the battery's next. Okay. So this particular project, with applying to the state, we really focused on 33 Moore Street, that's a building that's been on the market for a while, it's a big building, it has a parking lot with it, it's centrally located right between State Street and Cumberland Street, and, you know, really between the train station and the library. I like to say it's practically in the shadow of the new Bristol Hotel, and the property owner is interested in doing some redevelopment. There is a short-term lease for an occupant on the downstairs floor, and I'll show you pictures in a minute, but the upstairs is not in good shape, and he would like to develop that, but, so we focused on that, but then, especially because we realized that the city last year spent quite a bit of money on stormwater. I meant to put a picture of the stormwater, and I forgot to, but right in, let's see, this corner of Moore Street and Winston Alley, the Public Works Department spent, I think it's $89,000 to do stormwater improvements in that general area, so we realized we could use that as match, and that's acceptable. So that's what led us to looking more at this property, and then we thought, well, maybe they would let us do assessments on additional properties, so we budgeted in the proposal to do two other buildings. This is 28 Moore Street, across the street, where Bristol Office Supply Retail Store, there's a new owner, and he wants to develop it, and then the building between there and the end building on the block is also, I haven't had a very long conversation yet with the owner, but when, my initial conversation, he was interested and knew he had to do asbestos study and seemed interested in participating. So the grant, scope of work, is this, and we ran these numbers by, we got assistance from environmental firms that do this kind of work to budget for it, so the total grant request is to be $54,000, and no city match, it's all just documenting what was already spent on the Moore Street stormwater improvements, and that was completed mostly last calendar year, but a little bit more this year, I think. So it'd give us money to do those additional properties if they agreed, if the VDP, you know, funds this. And the other thing that we hope to get out of a lot, any of these grants, is they're very, seem like they're very interested in using the funds to do even more planning, and so just redevelopment of that general area, we do know in the comprehensive plan, that Moore Street, the Winston Alley, there was a lot of mention of gateway to downtown, and sprucing up more Winston Alley for, you know, more pedestrian-friendly access and its location there, so we're budgeting for some money just to be able to do a little additional detailed planning for redevelopment and reuse of some other areas nearby there. So that is what we're proposing, and we just, I think, need just action, would like to request action to authorize the city manager to sign the grant application. Glad to answer any questions.
All righty, thank you. Are there any questions, Ford?
Yeah, my question is, if this, this grant only covers going in and testing the buildings and doing samples?
Correct.
And do an assessment and a study?
Right. Yeah, there's no cleanup activity at all budgeted for, it's just asbestos testing, lead, paint, hopefully maybe some redevelopment plans of the space, but not actual cleanup.
Would the actual cleanup fall on the property owner?
Right, yes.
So that was going to be my question, so this is just a way for them to alleviate some of the costs to the property owner to take care of the upfront assessment, to see if they have a problem.
Alleviate costs, alleviate uncertainty for a buyer potentially.
Uncertainty to buy something, to develop it. Do you know what the match is? Do you know all the things that would be able to be a match?
We think that the $89,000, so we're well overmatched in.
Well, that's only, that's only stormwater improvements, what about sidewalk improvements? What about roadway improvements? What about lighting fixtures along the sidewalks? I mean, what all's a match?
Well, if there, if there were those things in that area, we could use that, but we just got from that one project, the documents from Public Works on that. And you can actually go back several years, four or five years, I think, back, but this was just last year, so, in terms of match.
Are those buildings contributing structures to the historic district?
I'm sure they would be. The 33 Moore Street was built in 1925, according to the historic survey, and I guess maybe you all know, it was the home of the Bristol newspaper.
So back to the match again, so if you, if you're really creative about this match, and you, if you can do some engineering and planning work to where you take some of the technical costs away from the owner, or somebody potentially looking to buy a property to develop it, you know, that might interest a developer that might do something with that property. If you, if you say, "We could, you know, provide some engineering drawings, some planning assessment stuff that alleviates, you know, $5,000, $10,000 worth of them having to go hire PE," so you need to really study the match thing, because there's probably a lot of things, if you get creative, that they would accept, because what you're trying to do at the end of the day is develop the property, right? Trying to take something that was dilapidated, environmental issue, and develop it, right? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just saying, we're, the city manager, we need to get creative with how you match. You get a better success with developing properties if you get, if you don't, you know, underestimate how many different ways you can match grants like this.
Right.
Yeah, I think the, you know, question is going to be, I mean, how much they'll want to grant to any one, you know, locality for a planning grant? I think we're pushing it to ask for $50,000 for the planning grant. We hope that we'll be.
They do say no.
I know, so we'll try.
Oh, they do say no.
And they may say, "Were you budgeted too much for this?" or whatever, but, you know, we think this is a good, good plan to propose.
Did I understand you right to, when you was talking there, localities even qualify for this grant money?
Localities? We are, we would be the.
Our buildings, the city's buildings.
Oh, for a city building?
For a city building.
Yes.
So the old school board would qualify for this if we've done, if we had the match over there in that area? over there in that area?
The Oak Street School?
Of Oaks, yeah.
We're getting it done. She's coming, EPA consultant is coming next week to do environmental phase one assessment of Oak Street School.
I think, didn't council vote on that?
I don't, I don't know. They had to. It was a, it was a simpler, a little bit simpler grant process. We just had to write a very simple request because that one is not a grant to the city. It's just money that EPA has set aside to do these targeted, it's called targeted brownfields assistance. So we, that was one we, that was the very first one we went for.
So what kind of hook are you going to put in this assessment so that you don't have a business person that comes up and has you do this and has you spend however much to do the assessment and then says, okay, I'm still not interested. Thanks, but no thanks. I want to go somewhere else. Are you going to...
Well, we don't control, this particular property is privately owned.
I guess what I'm saying is that you've got to do enough due diligence to know, once you do that assessment, that that property is still developable, that you're not just putting money to, you know, own a piece of property and the developers, there's other reasons they say, no, we're still not interested in doing anything with that property. You know, just, you've got to look at it from a lot of angles.
I was going to say, I like the fact how if we apply for it and we get it, the money that we have to match, we've already spent anyway on the stormwater stuff.
Right.
I was going to ask about how the property on Moore Street was chosen, because my first thought, looking at that map, it's, well, where the hotel and the museum are on Cumberland and then some restaurants on Piedmont and then everything on State Street, this kind of seems like it's right in the middle. So I think it'd be great if that area was ultimately revitalized. Was that just something, how was that chosen, just because of the location there and...
Well, we looked at older buildings and this one's a pretty big one that's been on the market and needs, you know, needs to be redeveloped, is not in good shape upstairs, it's not being utilized. And then when we started talking about match, we just said, what's the city done in this area? And we realized, you know, we had a match.
Has that owner reached out to the city? Is that what put his building on the radar?
No, we had to find who the owner was and reach out to him.
And if that study is done, is he willing to move forward to remedy the building?
I think, you know, that would be up to him and whether, you know, I know Ms., there was an earlier question about would he be the one paying for it unless there's some other grant opportunities that we would assist him with, so.
And the big one on the 33 Moore Street is for sale, I think.
Yes, it is. It's for sale.
That could be a good tool.
And he actually, the owner is fairly new and he does have plans of what he would like to do to it. He's talked about lofts upstairs, he talked about more office space. He just doesn't have a detailed plan yet.
So I want to thank you for the work you've done on putting this presentation together. And I certainly like the idea. I know this is all, you know, this is coming from state money, but we're all state taxpayers. And at the end of the day, I like to see, you know, the city being aggressive with, you know, pulling money back from the state and helping us out here locally. Because, you know, this money could very easily go to some other locality that's not here.
It will go to some other...
Yeah. This could, this could be money spent in Richmond or Norfolk or Newport News or wherever. So I'd much rather see it spent here, so.
But it's a double, it's a double-edged sword, Doug. You've got to understand that all this grant money is a finite pot of money. And so that's why you've got to do some good due diligence, because if you take and do all that grant money and put it on something and nothing from fruition comes out of it, nothing gets developed, then they're not going to look positive upon that the next time some pot of money becomes available. So you've got to really think about all the properties, right? And you've got to really sort through what's the best application of this money, because you want to do two things. You want to get it developed and you want to show the state that you applied it properly so that the next time money becomes available, it's there for you. You know, a lot of people go and do this stuff and then they don't do a good job. And the next time they go after money, they don't get it.
I would agree. And I think this might be kind of like a perfect storm of, you know, we've already got the matching by virtue of the fact that we did the stormwater improvements previously. And this is really in an ideal location for development, because you've got the museum, you've got downtown. It's really right in the, right in the sweet spot for, hopefully where people would like to develop, like you said, loft, stuff like that. So I do agree, we have to be, we have to be aggressive, we have to be smart. Hopefully this is a good combination of the two.
Well, there's stuff along Commonwealth. I mean, I would, I would argue that you've got to look, you've got to look at the Commonwealth foreline going from, you know, Euclid all the way down to State Street. There's a lot of properties down through there that potentially...
And we'll have that opportunity to do that this fall with the EPA money and look at some other sites. And we plan to do that. Sites or buildings.
All right, so public comment. I know Ms. Marnie basically signed up for everything, so do you have something on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, I'm a taxpayer. I've been sitting here waiting on the public comment and apparently it got lost in the shuffle somewhere, or I got lost in the shuffle, or whatever. I think my comment here to start with, you're spending my money. You're spending my money. And I don't always like how the same hill you're spending it. Now, through the years, there has been a pattern and I sincerely hope that pattern is going to end very quickly. But there has been a pattern of businesspeople in particular using the city as its toy. The city became the toy. Because some of these businesspeople, some of them are dead now, some of them aren't. I wish they were, but they're not. But they, instead of using their own money, they want to use my money, which is the city. I don't like that. Are you going to paint my house? How about my new gutter? You going to pay for that? How about the new sewer line? You going to pay for that? Why not? It'll increase the property value. Why not? Let me use you as my toy like some of these other people are. We have banks that lend money. That's what they do. They lend money. Now, I don't think it's up to the City of Bristol, Virginia to go in here when, just because somebody owns a building he can't sell, it isn't the city's responsibility to go in there and take charge and bring the thing in, or the state of Virginia. It is not our responsibility. We can encourage them to do it, but it is not the responsibility of the state of Virginia or the City of Bristol, Virginia to spend my money on one of these buildings. I don't like that. Now, if you want to pay for my new sewer line, come up there and pay for it. What's the difference? What's the difference?
Thank you. All right, so looking for a motion and a second on this.
I move that we approve to apply for the grant for the Virginia Brownfields Assistant Fund.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Hartley. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say, I don't think there's been enough due diligence done. I think you've got to go way past just scratching the surface on stuff like this, so I'm not impressed at this point.
I take issue in the fact that the city is the one driving this and the property owners are not the ones that's reached out. And I feel like this money is going to be spent. These reports are going to be put on the shelf and it's not going to be a viable investment.
I mean, obviously, you know, I mean, as far as, to me, it looks like if we want to encourage development in downtown, this can alleviate one obstacle to that, so people know what those buildings have an assessment of what they get, allow them to help get financing, move forward. It's not doing the work, it's just doing the assessment to make it available. And that takes a little bit of burden off of them and helps us hopefully develop downtown. But I'm also encouraged in that presentation to know that you, not just this grant, but through other sources of funding, you're looking at other areas, particularly Oak Street and Teneva, which have been talked about here for other uses and different things over the years. So it's good to know that that's being looked at and particularly the citywide. I think there's a lot of areas in the city that if we could get, you know, you start talking about it and people are like, well, that's a brownfield, there's issues with that property. We could figure out what those issues are and try to develop a strategy to redevelop it. I mean, it, you know, I think that's the point of this money is for locality like us, we're limited by the amount of land. We need to redevelop what we have and some of it has certain environmental issues. So if we can get assistance to identify and figure out how to overcome those issues, it just will help us down the road.
The only thing, oh, go ahead, sorry. The only thing I was going to say was just that, what you had mentioned earlier about how you'd like to see it come to Bristol, Mr. Mayor, what we're applying for, it's grant money. And if we don't apply for it, we don't get it. The state is going to spend it anyway. And it is your money and it's my money and your money. Anyone who lives in Virginia, it's our taxpayer dollars, but it's going to be spent anyway by people that are in higher positions than we are in Richmond. So if we don't apply for it, it could go to Richmond, it could go to Northern Virginia or Virginia Beach and we might as well apply for it if it doesn't cost us anything and see if we can get that money to Southwest Virginia to see if it can help Bristol.
I understand what you're saying there. The money will go somewhere. But the bottom line is government has a major, major, major spending problem. And at some point in time, people need to step up and say enough is enough. Our state is $120 million behind the eight ball. It's state money. But that don't mean people just needs to blow it and squander it. At some point, everybody needs to wake up and say enough is enough of the squandering of the money. And if this project has the potential to not move forward and these reports be put on a shelf and just collect dust because the property owners did not approach the city for assistance here, we don't need squandered money. Maybe there's another locality that can use it more than we can. But just because it's government money, doesn't mean you have to just squander it.
I agree. Somebody's got to set the example at some point in time. Somebody's got to lead government in the right direction. Government's been wasting our money for way too long, right? And so how did government get into the business of getting in between a private property buyer and a private property seller? Why are we even in the middle of that? Ever? We shouldn't be. It's the responsibility to the buyer to disclose what that property has. It's responsibility, or the seller, it's the responsibility of the buyer to go do the due diligence and to buy it on contingency until those clear. And why do we take the liability of that? That's not government's responsibility. That's not what government was created for. So anybody's got that philosophy is thinking way in the wrong direction.
You know, I would say, this money is going to be spent whether we use it or not. And it's not like it's magically, if we say no, it's not going to magically be refunded on your taxes next year. And, you know, as far as I'm paying taxes, I would prefer it come back here locally. That's, I would rather my money be spent here, you know, or I'd rather, you know, at least have that thought in my head. So, I mean, that's where I come from. It's not going to just go back to the people that paid it if we don't use it. And as far as whether or not the property owners came to the city and asked for it, a lot of times with these grants, you know, they're, they're all, they're all theoretical, they're all floating in the cloud. You don't know what's out there, you know, for the most part. You know, you can be a business owner, you can own a property, that doesn't mean you know how the federal grant process works, how the state grant process works. So, I mean, I'm sure if they had known about this, they'd probably been jumping on it a year ago, two years ago, if they had the opportunity.
We just recently found out about it, so.
And this is what you do for a living. And that's not what they do. So they, it's very unlikely, unless someone presents it to them, that they're going to know it's there. So, I mean, you know, you can have a difference of opinion and that'd be something, you do have to be fiscally responsible at a higher level, but if they're going to use the money anyway, I'd rather we use it here. Because we deserve to have our fair share of tax money from the state. So that's where I'm at on it, so. Anything else? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Item three, consider resolution granting final plat approval for plat 06-2019 for Wildflower Ridge Phase 1B staff report.
Council members, this is Phase 1B of Wildflower Ridge. This is coming to you all after the planning commission approved Phase 1B final plat and it, by city code, needs to come to you all as a, the body to certify the plat. And I have some pictures to show next. You all may remember back and you've seen the construction at this location, Phase 1A, the plat was approved in August of last year for five lots. Those homes, they're attached, single-family townhomes are completed. The developer, Mr. Aaron Lilly, had planned to do, as you can see the bottom there, the original preliminary plat, four more on that upper side. But I think due to market conditions and what people are preferring in terms of housing units, he has decided he needs to make those units smaller and the lots therefore smaller. So because it was a substantial change to the 2017 preliminary plat, it went back to the planning commission who approved a preliminary plat for Phase 1B. And then last month, they approved the final plat for those additional eight lots. And they are about 3,600 square feet. They do meet the standards for a townhouse density. And they are 22 feet wide as opposed to the 43-foot wide on the Phase 1A. So I had a couple pictures. If you haven't been up there, I think you probably are familiar with the homes that were built there on the first Phase 1A. And then the second picture is looking from the end of that last unit to the west where the additional, where the next phase would be built in that direction, toward that hillside. So I just have, which was in your packet, the surveyor has prepared actually six sheets because two of them are just a different scale to zoom down to. So they're really just the master plan on top and the final plat with the dimensions of the lots. And then because of the busyness of it, we have also, I think sheet five and, if you can flip to the next one. Are you doing that or mine? Drainage and utility easement plat shows the easements for those required, for the required infrastructure. And then the last one is ingress and egress, just showing the easements. Just a reminder, this is, these are private streets, not the Wildflower Ridge Road, that's public, but then the streets coming off that are private streets to be maintained by homeowners' There are some issues that have come up, but the planning commission did approve it with conditions. We don't have yet deed, the covenants on the plat hasn't been provided in terms of the Property Owners Association, whether it's going to be the ones that were already recorded or another set of covenants. Either way, they have to be up to par in terms of providing for the maintenance of all the common area, which is the case for Phase 1A. They have those in place. Bvu has started requiring deeds for utility easements, so they have indicated they wouldn't sign the plat until they had those. And another problem that has not just recently serviced, but has been a long-term problem is compliance with erosion and sediment control. And there's, recently, our city engineers, engineering department has put a stop-work order on the construction there until a plan can be presented that deals with the lack of stabilization that was to have been done. And I'm just putting, these were discussed at the planning commission meeting and they recognized that those would still have to be complied with. And then the landscape buffer is a thing that came out of the 1980 rezoning in the covenants and that we are under discussion with the developer about what would be required in the area here. This is quail-run condos and this is a retaining... This is quail-run condos and this is a retaining pond. This is on the property here. And the covenants do require for adjoining, even though it's adjoining residential, because of the offered conditions at that time when it was rezoned, that will need to be done and he is aware of that. So that is a little bit different, but we didn't wanna hold him up for a whole nother month and so the planning commission approved it with these conditions to be met before the signatures are finalized on the plat.
All right.
And you have a resolution in your packet.
Okay, so it looks like there's no public comment on it, so reading of the resolution.
Resolution, City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia approving the final plat number zero six hyphen 2019, Wildflower Ridge Phase One B subdivision. The city council finds that whereas the subdivision plat for Wildflower Ridge Phase One B subdivision has been properly submitted to the city and reviewed by city staff and whereas the planning commission met on July 15th, 2019 and approved the preliminary plat and also met on August 19th, 2019 and approved the final plat with conditions and whereas section 50 hyphen 270 requires that the final plat of the subdivision be approved and certified by city council before it can be recorded. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Bristol, Virginia. The council approves and certifies the final plat number zero six hyphen 2019 for Wildflower Ridge Phase One B subdivision as attached in Exhibit A with the following conditions as set forth by the planning commission. A, references made on the plat to record, recorded deed covenants that provide for Property Owners Association to be responsible for all common areas. The applicant satisfies BVU on the required utility easements to be recorded. The city engineering department is satisfied with the corrective actions required on erosion and sediment control and stormwater are completed. And a landscape buffer of vegetation must be provided as specified in number two of the conditional rezoning agreement dated May 1980 for this property, passed and adopted by the city council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of safe council on August 27th, 2019.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion and a second on this.
I move to approve the final plat.
Second.
All right. Motion is made by Mr. Wingard and second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. For the city manager, city attorney, do you feel good about this deeded right away, basically that BVU wants to make a deed in BVU's name? Is that, is that normal mode of practice? Why has it come up all of a sudden? And tell us kind of the reasons behind this.
Well, I think these are easements that BVU needs in order to provide electricity and sewer to the property. I think this is something that is regularly done in most subdivisions or any sort of development. The utility department has to have an easement. If there's not an easement, they can't provide those services.
Well, I'm reading it as different. The easement's one thing, but having a deeded easement, which is a little different.
No, they're all.
But I don't know that.
They're all easements are deeded.
Then why all of a sudden is this a new discussion about BVU requesting a deeded easement?
I think this is just based on timing and before we record the plat, we just wanna, BVU wants to make sure they get the deeded easements prior to the plat being recorded.
Other question, why are we voting on this before the contingency's clear? What's the urgency of voting until the contingency's clear?
I, that would, I mean.
The planning commission saw no need to hold the developer up. He agreed to the, all the improvements and he cannot move forward without city signatures. So as soon as he does what he needs to do, then the city signatures can be applied and he doesn't have to come back before any boards. But he cannot move forward with this project without signatures.
I think the timing would have probably pushed us out either to late September or the first meeting in October if we didn't do it this time.
I just wanted to say, you know, to the developer, Mr. Lilly, I appreciate what you're doing in the City of Bristol, Virginia, because I know you've developed other properties in the city and you can go and build properties anywhere you want, but you've chosen Bristol, Virginia city and I think that's something that the city needs is more new development, new construction, especially residential. And I've seen these properties and they're beautiful, so, you know, I thank you for doing what you're doing here in the city.
Say something?
Sure, come on.
First of all, as to the rightaways, when we did Phase One, BVU led us, they, rather than have all these easements all over these maps, I just decided to make it easy for BVU. And we put on the, we put on the plat, everything outside the envelope of the unit, of the building is our utility easements. Because you never know when, if you're pulling a utility easement here and you will change some plans or something, so that, that sufficed for One A. When we got to One B, they changed their minds. There was a lawsuit, and I talked to the man last week about this. There was a lawsuit, somebody sued BVU. And BVU did some repairs on something and they got out of the easement. So BVU says, hey, they told, they told us just here recently, I mean, really recently, that, hey, our legal department is putting together the details of what we're gonna require. And as of last Friday, the legal department had not put that together. So we, yes, we, we did have everything in place. We do have utility easements. Utility easements are all over that property. But they came back because somebody sued them and says, our legal department says we can't do that anymore. And that was just, I mean, within the last few weeks. So as of today, they, we, we're gonna have to work with them. They're gonna have to get the legal department to give us whatever the rules are. We don't mind putting them on a map. They just won't tell us what the rules are. I don't know if that answered your question. That was not a picture of our property, by the way, that we put up there. That, and Mr. Pollard is our nearest neighbor. I don't know how long ago that picture was taken.
That was taken on the 19th of August, Aaron.
Well, there's green grass up there.
I checked on that because you had asked me that at the planning commission meeting and I took it that day of the meeting.
It's the only piece of the property, there's 12 acres there and there's two acres that's not, not grassed. And I want to tell you about that real, just real quick. We grasped everything else and Mr. Pollard is our neighbor and I didn't know he was watching, but he'll verify that, yes, last spring, we planted like eight or 10 acres in topsoil, we planted it, it all came up. The only thing that we're waiting on right now, the city engineering wants us to push this last hillside down, we're gonna be putting basements in there. We need all that dirt to come right down, let us, let us put our basements in and then pull the dirt all in against it and we only have to move the dirt one time. What they've asked us to do is pull the dirt in, plant it, plant everything and then immediately bulldoze it back out so we can put our basements in. And then we gotta bulldoze it back in and we've, we're trying to work that out with the engineering department, but it's, it's not a big deal. It's a lot of money to move it three times and not one time, but I think, I think it could be made a lot easier if they just let us put our basements in and move it one time and then we're done. And that's some of the stipulations or we just, one other thing. We turned in a, a plat and engineering without any of the grass coming up. And when we planted all the grass in the spring and it all came up and we're mowing it now, with the exception of this one Phase One B, all the grass is coming up and all the engineering calculations changed because now instead of drainage over bare dirt and bare earth, the grass has come up and so much, so much of the engineering has changed. I did talk to engineering and here at the city today and told them that they would have the final engineering done Thursday afternoon. So it's not like it's gonna take forever. I'm still working.
So is this city engineering that's causing this or is this BVU engineering?
City. But we're working with that. Nothing's easy.
So you're happy with BVU then how they've handled the deeded, that whole deeded easement? You're.
No, sir, I'm not. I think they should have, they should have a plan in place before they tell us that we're gonna have to stop the construction.
That's what I thought. That's why I asked the question.
Mr. King told me that they recorded deeds were to be done for Phase One A and they hadn't been done for that.
No, that's wrong. We, if you look on the plat map, it says everything outside the envelope of the units is a utility easement that's very easy to verify. Then the other, it's been within the last three weeks that they've changed their mind and I called Mr. King and I says, tell me where you want the easements. We can, we can, we've already got the pipe in. We can easily show where the units are. As a matter of fact, we have Miss Virginia utility.
It's not the, it's not the plat, the easements are on the plat, it's the deeds being recorded for the easements and the wording and to.
Yes, ma'am. And he'll tell you if you call tomorrow that the wording for the easements is something that the legal department has to work out and they haven't done it yet.
Which that's why I brought it up, because this whole, this whole deed thing is a new requirement.
I'm not sure how new. I think they've been doing it for a while. Couple, a couple years.
From my legal experience, anytime you have a utility easement, it is reported in a deed. I mean, that, and it may not be specifically in your deed, but it's referred to in a prior deed in that chain of title. If you buy a home today on Cherokee Avenue and go back and look at the original deed, there's probably an easement associated with that deed in that chain of title. It may not be on your deed, but it may be in three deeds, three deeds prior.
Well, maybe there's something going on I don't understand, but clearly, we have been building properties for 50-plus years. So here we are, trying to allow a developer to develop a good piece of property and now we're talking about issues with the deeded easements, we're talking about how dirt is moved. So something's awry. You don't, you don't have, you don't have a project this far down the pike and then all of a sudden, the legal department is still trying to get the deeded stuff at BVU. So something's not smooth with the process.
This came up, is my guess, based on the Wagner Hills, where Wagner Hills has sued BVU in regards to the water leakage that they've had over there at Wagner Hills. They sued them a month ago, maybe, somewhere in that range, a month, six weeks ago. And my guess is that's why it's come up at this point.
So because of that, now we're taking a current project and we're trying to react to a lawsuit and, and put a burden on a current project before the legal work has been done. That's my whole issue here. You know, it's kinda, you know, well, you see where I'm coming from, right? I mean, it, it should be a lot smoother than this. A developer will lose patience. We're supposed to be open for business. This should have been a figured-out process, check, 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 do it simple, move on. And that's not what it is. Goes to BVU, now all of a sudden the rules are changing. Now you have a deed, don't look at me like that and shake your head. It's absolutely a fact. And so you gotta go up here trying to develop a property and now we got this new requirement on a, on a deeded easement that has never come up and has only come up because now they've got their pants sued because something happened at another property. Okay, that's what's happening. That's the fact. So I'm glad that's out in public now. So we, we now kinda get how the, how the government entities around here are supporting private industry and development. There are more issues with getting through the hurdles of all the stuff that changes day to day to make a smooth process on a private person trying to develop something. It's not right. This should have been figured out before this day and time has arrived. That's all I'm saying.
I got a question. How many basements are you wanting to build right now?
Eight.
Eight. And you have a stop work order on you and you can't build them?
Yes.
And this city put that stop work order on you?
Yes.
See, there's another, another example.
There are, there are issues related to this project that you all do not know about, that it's probably not in your all's purview and that's the reason for this stop work order? We're working through that. Mr. Lilly's working through that. It's things that come up. I mean, it's nothing that.
Well, I understand that erosion control is a serious issue.
And that's exactly what this amounts to, is erosion control. And it's, we have to follow certain guidelines set by the DEQ.
I understand that.
And we've taken this too far down the rabbit hole and to sit here and question what Ms. Morgan is trying to tell you and explain how this has worked, I just, I find it offensive, quite honestly. I mean, I was told in a council meeting to bring it up when you're wrong and to sit here and call out a city planner for something that she does, it's her job. And she knows what she's doing. I find it offensive.
Fine. And I find it, I find it impractical that you got a private developer trying to go through these hurdles when he shouldn't have to do this. So there you go.
Well, obviously, just like you said, you don't understand that there has to be an easement, a deed, an easement recorded in a deed. And that's just the way it is. It's been that way from the beginning of time.
That's fine. We just don't wanna improve. That's fine.
BVU has to sign our plats. It's in the code. They have to sign our plats. The representative that signs our plats told me he has to have deeds to the easements before he'll sign the plat. That's why it's a condition. It won't get signed by them.
They signed off on Phase One A and what we put down for One A was fine. This just came up as a result of that.
And now they won't sign off on Phase One B.
Mr. Lilly, will this Phase One B, will they also have solar panels like?
Yes.
Ones in Phase One A?
Yes.
I think that's great. There's nothing else like that in the city.
There, there's more of a market for townhouses, townhomes than there are 3,000. We took the five homes and tried to figure out how to put solar and how to build it. And it was an experiment, but all the ones that are finished are occupied and I tickled to death with, with the results. But my business has always been town, we built 150 townhouses right across the street there at Seven Oaks. Turned out real well. They were, we've got 150 taxpaying families in there and they go to local restaurants, they go fill up the gas stations, they do everything in Bristol, Virginia. And this is our part. You all have your part, I have my part. Doing the best we can to meet in the middle.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
And I'd just like to say to, to Mr. Lilly, I appreciate, like, like Mr. Farnham had said, those are beautiful, beautiful buildings you all have put up there and, and I really do appreciate that they're, you're using alternative energy because that's, that's the way of the future and you're getting on board with it. You're getting ahead of the curve of everybody else and you're kinda setting an example for how you can use it and how it can be done well and how it can be done right. So I appreciate it. And if there's no further discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and request the clerk call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Item four is consider a closed session pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711A1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performances, demotion, salaries, displing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body appointments. What do we wanna do here?
I'm under the impression this is closed session, it's not, no longer needed and I move to table it.
All right. Got a motion to table?
Second.
All right, so a motion to table from Mr. Wingard and a second from Mr. Hartley. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Next item is consider appointments to boards and commissions. So basically what we're gonna do here, I'd like to say, we, we interviewed at our last meeting a whole bunch of qualified people for a whole bunch of boards and commissions. And we had, we had three that we left open till we could make a further decision on it. So what we're going to do and what we're gonna vote on is the appointment of Taylor Griffin to the Ninth District Development and Financing Board, Langley Shazer to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Rick Watts to the Industrial Development Authority. So I'm looking for a motion and a second on those appointments.
I make the motion that we appoint these as presented.
I'll second. Just a point of clarification that Mr. Watts is filling the.
Yes.
Term of Ms. Oxendine.
Yes, so for background, there was, the appointment we made at the last meeting was for a full term. This appointment is because of a resignation of a member and this term expired on June the 30th of 2020. So those are the, those are the three we have and we have a motion and a second and if the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Item six is discussion of financing opportunities for property acquisition.
Could I make a motion that we move six to seven and seven to six and get the finance, the status of the city before we talk about the, the property?
I think that needed to be done at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Council, back in early June, late May, a council member approached me in regards to a building that was gonna go up for auction and there's not any slides. Here within the City of Bristol is Old Virginia Employment Commission Building up at exit seven and there were internal discussions to have whether we needed to purchase that building for the Department of Social Services. We chose to make a bid on that property at the June 13th auction. We bid the property in at $611,000 for a total purchase price of $671,000. Since that time, we have issued an RFP. Those RFPs have come back and due to procurement laws, we have to do a, a review each one of those RFPs and make a decision which bank we would go with if we want to finance the purchase of the building. If we don't wanna finance a purchase of the building, I need to know that tonight. We can move forward and just buy it with cash. Otherwise, I just need to know tonight, is there a consensus to finance any portion Otherwise, I just need to know tonight, is there a consensus to finance any portion or none of the building?
From day one on this project, I've been an advocate that we need to pay cash for it if we have the means to do so. The city has enough debt hanging over its head. And if we finance this, it's going to be another seventy thousand plus annually for the next ten years or so. And we have not seen our way through the current debt situation. We're two-point-two short. This is going to add another seventy thousand a year. And we have the money to write this check. This building was greatly needed. And the city saw the opportunity to get it, and I am so glad they did. But with that being said, we have the means to pay cash for this. And I feel like that is what we need to do. I'm, I'm not in favor of borrowing any more money.
I got a question for Tamara. If we pay cash for it a hundred percent, how close does that put us to the threshold for our financial policy for, you know, what we said as far as the unassigned fund balance?
The unassigned fund balance for June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, won't be complete until much later in the fall. I will tell you that based on the preliminary cash basis numbers, just preliminarily, preliminary, that the city could buy that building outright. There are funds there.
So you're not nervous if we bought it outright and paid cash?
No, I would be nervous about that. Certainly, Councilman Mumpower, with the upcoming issues that the city has, that the city faces, including falls development, the debt escalation in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, and some uncertain economic factors, I would be nervous about that. I would, that is my opinion as, as the CFO.
So you'd feel better if we put about, what, fifty percent down on it and then borrowed the rest? Is that more comfortable?
Certainly would, would feel a little more comfortable if we didn't type six hundred and eleven thousand additional dollars of, of city monies. That being said, I certainly think Councilman Wingard has a valid point. I, too, worry about the debt threshold of the city and don't want to see that debt increase. That being said, if you ask my opinion, then I would certainly look at a financing mix. The plan that, that we started, gosh, two years ago, the plan that we talked about was make sure the city is off the tan, meet the unassigned fund balance goal, and then look at our policy reserves, which total about five million when you look at whether it's emergency or capital. And those are policies that were developed in the Finance Committee, presented to council, and approved. We've, we've done very well with, with the plan, but we have not met those reserve balances. And before there were a significant unbudgeted, unbudgeted expenditure, I would recommend, as I believe the city manager would, that, that we look at financing until those reserves are met.
A hundred percent financing?
Yes, sir. That, yes, sir. That being said, I certainly appreciate what Councilman Wingard says. The debt of the city is staggering. And certainly no one, I think, wants to increase that. That being said, this was the plan that the Finance Committee recommended and council approved. And, and we're being successful in following that plan. I would advocate that we follow the plan.
And I would agree. I mean, I think Councilman Wingard's a hundred percent correct. I mean, I would love to be able to pay cash for this building. I think we have too many uncertainties that's facing the city over the next three, four fiscal years. We just don't know what amount of cash we might need in one lump sum. Let's take the jail, for example. I mean, at the last meeting, council approved one hundred thousand, I think it was one hundred dollars for inmate expenses that we're paying to have inmates at the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail. And it continues to rise on a daily basis. You've also got the falls and the development of the falls. And if the falls doesn't develop, how much more can we sustain from our general fund to cover that falls? And then, I can't remember the third issue now, oh, the landfill. I mean, nine hundred thousand dollars of what you're getting ready to see at the surplus of the landfill for this coming year was city money. I mean, it's, and we already know we've lost Bristol, Tennessee. We're in negotiations with another group right now that has indicated they will no longer be with us. And that'll be a loss of at least four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, if not four fifty. I mean, these are significant numbers that we've got to deal with. And I, you know, I'd just like to point out, we've been following the policies. I think that following these policies have done us well. As Ms. Marnie stated earlier, we're no longer being watched over by the Auditor of Public Accounts. Doesn't mean that we're free and clear by any stretch of the imagination, but these are policies that were developed. Mr. Hartley and Mr. Mumpower sit in the Finance Committee. They've been on that committee for the past two years. They were the ones that helped develop those policies. And to not follow those policies now, it doesn't make any sense.
So in order to finance the property, we have to put out an RFP, see what our options are, and then we revisit it. And we would vote again after looking at-
The RFP's already been put out. We've already received responses back. Without going through all the proper procurement steps, I can't tonight tell you exactly which RFP proposal is the best. What I can tell you is that the rates were in the four percent range for a ten-year term. And if that's the case, you know, it'd be roughly seventy-five thousand dollar a year payment. Based on funds that we're receiving from the State Department of Social Services in regards to the purchase of this building, we will be able to recoup roughly twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars in depreciated costs per year. So you can, that helps in regards to how we have to come up with the funds in order to pay this. Now, with all this being said, we could go do a note tomorrow for ten years. And then if, you know, Ms. Bradlin wins the lottery and decides to notate it to the city, we could pay off the, we could pay that off the next day. You know, there's no requirement that you have to stay in the, stay in that note for the full ten years. It's, I, I think what we need to do is finance right now. See how this upcoming year goes in regards to several things that are happening in Richmond. See how our budget continues to go. I think we'll be pleased with what Ms. Bradlin's going to present here shortly. And if it continues on that way, we revisit this sometime next year and potentially pay it off, maybe not next year, but within the next couple of years.
I mean, what I'd say, to me, I mean, again, nobody, you know, debt's been an albatross around this council's neck for awhile. I mean, it, it limits what we can do. Nobody necessarily wants to add to that. But this was a very unexpected opportunity that it came up. And, you know, we didn't necessarily plan for it, didn't budget for it, didn't have it there. So, but we were able, hopefully, to take advantage of it, which is, I think, will be a, a good thing. But this would just, what I'm hearing is, you know, we can finance this and, and potentially, we can look to see what we maybe can pay down as an initial payment. And then we don't have to stay within the terms. We can prepay or if, if we continue to do good. But right now, given so much uncertainty in not only the city, but the broader macroeconomy, I think, you know, keeping cash on hand, it would be beneficial for us. Even when we talked about setting up the rainy day, or I guess we called it the emergency reserve, that, you know, some of us said that even that amount we set aside wasn't enough, that we need to have more money on hand. We need to be setting more aside to deal with the debt. So I think for the, at least right now, doing that and then we can revisit as part of the budget process and see maybe we, we can pay more as, as we get into that and see how things unfold. But, yeah, I'd say go ahead and explore the financing options. And particularly, we can look at if we want to, not a hundred percent financing, but kind of see where that balance is of what to put down, what we can afford, what it does in terms of the payment.
What, what's the date you have to do the final financing?
I want to close this by September thirtieth.
But we have the opportunity to dissolve a lease that we're currently paying twenty-six thousand dollars a year on.
We had, we've lost it?
No. We have an opportunity to dissolve a lease that will put twenty-six thousand dollars a year back into the city that we will not have to spend.
If it's dissolved prior to what date?
It's, it's, we do it at any time.
It's the current lease right now with Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
And we're month-to-month with him.
So it's about two grand a month?
We're in an opportunity that we can pay cash for this and get this building behind us and still save twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And if we finance this building at seventy-plus thousand dollars a year and dissolve the lease, and that's a, an offset of fifty thousand dollars on paper, but still, the bottom line is, that's fifty thousand dollars of debt that this city should not have. Actually, it's going to be seventy a year. We really need to seize the moment in the fact that we've done our due diligence in this city to get a financial foothold again to where we are stable. And to borrow money at this point is just physically not responsible. We have not met our current debt load. We're still two-point-two million dollars behind. And to add to that is not being responsible when we physically have the ability to write the check one time and be done with this.
So I'm not, I'm not in the, I'm not in the game of we need to finance a hundred percent. I'm not there. I, I would disagree that we need to finance a hundred percent. But I'm not in the camp that we should pay a hundred percent cash either. We're kind of in that, we're kind of in that time period where we've got to kind of thread the needle. You know, we, we want to, we want to obviously move toward paying cash at every opportunity, no doubt. We're just not there yet as a city. But we've got to show that we're willing to move in that direction. So we at least have to put down a substantial amount of cash and not finance nearly a hundred percent. So I'm more in the camp of putting down at least forty to sixty percent cash and finance the rest of it because we're going to make up the savings with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office that basically counteracts the payment on what's, on basically what's left, so to speak. So, you know, it's kind of a net almost zero to the city if we kind of meet midway. Three hundred thousand, two fifty, three seventy-five, you know, some kind of number in there, cash down, and then finance the balance until we get further down the road and then pay it off, pay it off as quick as we can.
One thing we can't forget is there's going to be requirements to do some upgrades at the current DSS building as well if we decide to move another city office into that building. So it's not, that's not free. So there will be expenses associated with that. Basically, what I'm hearing tonight is go forward, deal with the, start looking at the financing piece. We'll do that. We'll have more numbers back on September thirteenth with, hopefully, get this closed out by end of September.
What was the final purchase, six?
Six seventy-one was the final purchase, six seventy-one was the final purchase price. We put sixty thousand dollars down on June thirteenth, which leaves us a balance of six hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
So you put three hundred down, you finance three hundred, what's that payment about?
Roughly thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Yeah. And Commonwealth Attorney counteracts that by twenty-six.
Correct.
I was going to say, I agree that I think we needed the building, for sure. Because at first, when it came up, I was like, I don't know if we should do this or not, get into purchasing something like this, because how do we pay for it? But I think after looking at the options about fixing up the current offices where they're at, that was more expensive. Or going out and leasing other space somewhere else, that was more expensive. So it seemed like it was the best thing to do to, to look at just buying it. That way we own it and control it. And, but, yeah, but yeah, as far as financing or paying cash, I'd be open to looking at what the financing options are.
If you get some other entities that owe us money to give us our money, we probably could pay cash and not even talk about it.
All right, yeah, go ahead and see what you can, see what you can find out with the financing. I do look forward to seeing what we can do. I know you've heard my reservations previously about this plan, but it ended up being a good opportunity. So I look forward to seeing what kind of financing stuff you can give us.
I want the last question. With the rating agencies looking at our credit rating, that's, maybe we'll see the picture of that and what a half a point change might affect on this financing?
We may have to redo the RFP at that point. And I don't know if we'd have time to get that done by September thirtieth. Because I think September sixth, I believe, is their date that we'll know something from the rating agency. That's a Fri-, that's a Friday, first Friday in September, I think it's the sixth.
Thank you very much.
I thought lawyers could work fast.
We do, when we don't have obstacles put up for no good reason.
Six thirtieth September, there's twenty-four days in there. It's a lot of time, isn't it?
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty. Item seven, receive quarterly financial update, update from CFO.
Mayor, members of council, this is the finance update for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. We will be discussing revenues and expenditures as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Please keep in mind, this data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city received and expenditures the city paid. This is unaudited data. The general fund summary with a budget of fifty-four point three million. Revenues were fifty-six million, one hundred and three percent of the budgeted revenue. Expenditures were forty-nine point eight million, ninety-one point eight-three percent of budget for a surplus, unaudited, of six point one million. Solid Waste Disposal Fund summary with a budget of five point six million. Revenues were six point one million, one hundred and nine percent of the budget. Expenditures were four point eight million, or eighty-six percent of the budget. The Capital Projects Fund summary, revenues of seven point one million, expenditures of seven million for a balance of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Bond proceeds remaining to be expended in this fund at June thirtieth were eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And this fund also had a significant receivable from VDOT in the amount of eight hundred thousand at year-end, and it has been received. Here's the general fund revenue summary. Of the fifty-six million received by the general fund, thirty-seven point three million is from local sources, fourteen point eight million is from state, state sources, and three point eight million is from federal sources. Other financing sources totaled just over one hundred and twenty-five thousand. The general fund expenditure summary, and I'm going to go over the actual column, which makes up forty-nine point nine million in expenditures. General Government Administration is two point six million. Judicial Administration was one point five nine million. Public Safety, thirteen point eight million. Public Works was five point eight million. The budget variance here was due to state reimbursed maintenance money and was covered by state funds received. Health, Welfare, and Social Services, seven point nine million. Education, six point eight million. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural, two point eight million. Community Development, one point four million. Non-departmental, one point two six, two six two million. Debt, two point eight million. Transfers of three million, a slight budget variance here due to the timing of Phase One DRI revenues that are transferred out to the IDA for debt service. So what makes up the six point one million of general fund surplus of revenues over expenditures for the fiscal year? Once again, the budget-to-actual comparison, revenues exceeded budget for the fiscal year at one hundred and three percent. Expenditures were held below budget at ninety-one point eight-three percent, driving the budget surplus. Considering fiscal year eighteen, carryover of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, debt service reserve of one million dollars, which was budgeted in fiscal year nineteen and never intended to be expended and was actually reserved, of one million. Fiscal year eighteen, refinance savings of two hundred and forty-six thousand that was, that was still present in the fiscal year nineteen budget to keep the debt numbers level, two hundred and forty-six thousand. Funds carried over to fiscal year twenty that council approved at the last council meeting of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Backing those items out would take the surplus down to about four million. The city finished the fiscal year very strong with three point eight million in revenues over expenditures from May and June alone. Some significant revenue positive budget variances. General property taxes were nine hundred and ninety-three thousand over budget. Other local taxes, and you'll see more of that breakdown later, one point one million. Interest earned but unexpended for the year was ninety-four thousand. If you'll remember, at the end of fiscal year nineteen, we appropriated one hundred thousand of interest earnings to the schools. The treasurer oversees the interest earnings on the city funds. I just wanted to, to add that she's done a good job managing that. I just wanted to, to add that she's done a good job managing that. Funds and forfeitures, positive budget variance of sixty-two thousand. And I did wanna point out that the ambulance revenue for fiscal year nineteen, which was slow coming in at first, um, in the fiscal year, ended up thirty-six thousand dollars of, um, receipts in excess of budget. This is what our general fund revenue looks like. The blue is our local revenue at sixty-seven percent of general fund revenues received. Local revenue makes up sixty-five percent of our general fund budget. The red is our state revenue at twenty-six percent of the general fund revenues. State revenues make up twenty-eight percent of our general fund budget. The green is our federal revenue at seven percent of the general fund revenues. Federal revenues make up seven percent of our general fund budget. Other financing sources is less than one percent of the general fund revenues, so small you can't see it on this graph. Our revenue composition is right in line with the budget for fiscal year nineteen. This is what our general fund expenditures look like. This is how the city's general fund monies is, are spent. Public safety is twenty-eight percent of general fund expenditures. Health, welfare, and social services is at sixteen percent. Education, thirteen percent. Public works, eleven-point-five-nine percent. Transfers are at six percent. Parks, recreation, and cultural, five percent. Our debt is five percent. Government administration is five percent of general fund expenditures. Community development is slightly over three percent. Judicial administration is over two percent, but under three percent. And non-departmental is at two-point-five-three percent. So that's what the graph looks like of how general fund monies are expended. This is a year-to-year comparison of how the general fund's money was spent by major category. Comparing fiscal year eighteen to fiscal year nineteen. Eighteen is shown in the red and nineteen in the blue. You can see that there's not much variance from year to year, meaning that the expenditure comparison by department is stable within our general fund. Our revenue report, the general fund revenue report. General, general property taxes are at one-hundred-and-five-point-six-three percent of the budgeted amount. Other local taxes, and we're gonna talk about this detail just a little bit more in, shortly, one-hundred-and-eight percent. Permits and privilege fees, end of the year at seventy-six-point-five-five percent. And we did, um, adjust that, that category downward for, uh, the budget for fiscal year twenty. Funds and forfeitures are at one-hundred-and-thirty-one percent due to the traffic program. Revenue from the use of money and property is one-hundred-and-fifty-one percent. This is due to interest earnings and a significant rent item one-time received early in fiscal year nineteen. Charges for services is at one-hundred-and-two percent. Miscellaneous revenue, right at ninety-one percent. Recovered costs are at one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-point-five-four percent of the budgeted amount. This is due largely for, um, the fuel that the city purchases, and five outside agencies pay the city for that fuel. And also the school va core payment, the school insurance payment in fiscal year nineteen. The city paid the entire insurance bill and the school reimbursed us. Um, in fiscal year twenty, the, the schools were billed directly. State revenue is at ninety-six percent. Federal revenue is at ninety-three-point-six-nine percent. Other financing sources, um, one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-five percent, not thousand percent, excuse me, due to the CDB, CDB cha- CDBG transfer for the code compliance officer. Um, the code compliance officer's salary, um, as he works on, um, CDBG eligible properties is allowed to be paid for, um, by the grant. So our target revenue. The target revenue report, budget-to-actual comparison at June thirtieth. You can see that local sales and use tax has a positive budget variance of over five-hundred thousand dollars. Consumer utility tax and the tax on record, on records have positive budget variances. The cigarette tax had a positive budget variance of sixty-two thousand. Lodging taxes had a positive budget variance of one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. Restaurant meal taxes, positive budget variance of one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. The electric consumption and admission tax have slight budget variances. Communications tax had a negative budget variance. We did adjust the budget, um, for fiscal year twenty downward for that category five-hundred to five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Total positive budget variances for the year were eight-hundred-and-ten thousand, um, dollars. For comparative purposes, the prior year positive budget variance was two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. Financial data graphs, these graphs contain data, data for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Current year or fiscal year nineteen, shown in red. Local sales and use tax, you can see we are up from fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The consumer utility taxes are holding steady. Cigarette taxes are down from fiscal year seventeen, but up from previous years. Lodging taxes are up for the period. Meal taxes are up from seventeen and eighteen, but down still from fifteen and sixteen. And here's what our local sales and use tax looks like as it comes in. The three-year average from fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen is shown in blue. Fiscal year nineteen is shown in orange. And you can see our local sales and use tax, for the most part, follows the same curve. Here's what the lodging tax looks like as it's received by the city. And we are on the same curve as prior years. And I know, um, Councilwoman Mumpower has talked in, um, my office, and the city manager works with CBB to, to talk about how we can even that line out and generate more revenues for the city. Here's where our meals tax revenue looks like as it comes in. Now we'll transition to the solid waste disposal fund summary. Once again, revenues of six-point-one million, expenditures of four-point-eight million for a fund surplus of one-point-two-eight million dollars. This does include general fund transfers of five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand and approximately three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars of tipping p- tipping fees, excuse me, um, paid for by the general fund. Just a reminder, the city still has over four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand in bond proceeds from the November twenty-sixteen bond issue. These will be spent toward a landfill liner and must be expended by November of twenty-nineteen. And I know that solid waste is on track with that expenditure. Disposal revenues were at one-hundred-and-three percent. A positive budget surplus of four-hundred-and-forty thousand for the year. This positive budget variance was spread across the disposal revenues, meaning it was from multiple contracts and revenue received at the scales. Collection revenues are at a hundred-and-five percent. Disposal expenditures for the year were held at ninety-one percent. Collection expenditures at eighty-two percent. And the primary driver there was, um, we entered into a lease for a new garbage, garbage truck. It was not delivered before June thirtieth. We anticipate, um, taking possession of that this fall. We always point out when we discuss the solid waste disposal fund that debt expenditures are ninety-nine percent, I'm sorry, that are at ninety-nine percent and that they make up thirty percent of the solid waste disposal fund budget. Falls update for phases two and three. Phase one is, um, one-hundred percent exclusively to fund the IDA revenue bonds. You can see the budgeted information in the budget column and the actual for the year. We budgeted four-hundred-and-seventy thousand of revenues and actually received seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. Debt allocated to the falls in fiscal year nineteen was one-point-eight million. The revenue sharing payment is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So you can see that in the fiscal year nineteen budget, we budgeted for a deficit of almost one-point-seven million and actually realized a cash basis deficit of one-point-three-six-one million. Here's the cash balance information. The previous tan expired December thirty-first of twenty-eighteen and was not renewed. It is not in the fiscal year twenty, um, appropriation ordinance. The operating cash balance at June thirtieth was nineteen-point-nine million. I'm gonna talk about that in more detail in just one second. The city earned over two-hundred-and-two thousand dollars in interest. And to keep that in perspective, um, I did verify with the treasurer that just a few short years ago, the city earned under five-hundred dollars a year in interest. Um, also for perspective, the cash balance at June twenty-eighteen was fourteen-point-two million. The cash balance at June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen, was seven-point-four million. Once again, the city plan to build up cash to reduce the reliance on the tan and to establish reserve accounts is working. So here's some of the detail of the cash balance. Um, of the nineteen-point-nine million, five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-six is from fiscal year eighteen. Refinance savings budgeted to be expended in fiscal year twenty, those funds will be expended. Liner accrual for seventeen, eighteen, two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Liner accrual for eighteen, nineteen, one-hundred-and-twelve thousand. Debt service reserve, which council, um, committed those funds in June of this year, one-point-seven-nine-four million in total. Emergency reserve, also committed in June of this fis- of fiscal year nineteen, one-point-four million. In the nineteen-twenty budget, um, there are liner expenditures of three-hundred thousand to be expended from this cash balance, which brings the total cash available at June thirtieth, um, from, down from nineteen-point-nine to fifteen-point-five. Our unassigned fund balance goal is approximately eleven million. As I've said multiple times, we don't have to, the city does not have to keep eleven million dollars in the bank year-round. We absolutely need to be at that unassigned fund balance, um, cash availability at June thirtieth, eleven million. July twenty-nineteen debt payments, which are paid out of this June thirtieth cash balance, were two-point-one million. So quickly, you can see of the fifteen-point-five, that, um, thirteen-point-one of that is earmarked. So up, so upcoming items, what is next? As the city manager discussed, we do expect a credit rating review soon. Um, we hope for that, we anticipate that will be complete in the month of September. Auditors will be in the city in September. We anticipate final audited financial statements to be presented early December. This will include the final fiscal year, um, twenty-nineteen unassigned fund balance number. And from that number, we will, we will then look at our, um, policies, um, policies, our ratios, and our reserve balances. The finance committee will begin updating the financial policies this fall with presentation to council after the audited financial results are presented, but before budget season begins. Due to, due to the limitations this city has regarding its legal debt margin and escalating debt payments scheduled for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, the finance committee will be reviewing the reserve account goals and a future debt pay-down schedule. We want to develop the plan that once our reserve goals are made, that as bonds become callable, we, we pay them down. The capital improvement committee will begin work this fall updating the capital improvement plan for presentation to council before budget season. And finally, the finance department will be working to revise the budget document to update that presentation. And council, this concludes the presentation of the unaudited annual financial data. Thank you.
Wow, I almost wanna give a standing ovation. That has to be the best news story of the year right there. There is no doubt about it. Who would've thought, four years ago, we'd be seeing that kind of a picture? That's phenomenal. That's phenomenal. You guys aren't giving yourself enough credit for the hard work. That is unbelievable. Nobody expected that cash surplus. Nobody expected that expenditures would be held that tight, right? That's an unbelievably good job.
And I would like to add that city departments have really stepped up to the plate and ke- and kept their expenditures.
I mean, there's so many good news items in those slides, it, we could talk all night. Like, I was surprised with the solid waste fund. So how all of a sudden did we go from subsidizing the solid waste to nine-hundred thousand to flipping it to the positive?
It is still subsidized.
But, but with the subsidy, we covered that plus some.
Right, and, and we've budgeted for some of that to be expended next year toward the liner, but yes, sir.
So is the eighteen percent threshold on, that's the finance policy, right? Eighteen percent on our budget amount, so fifty-six million times eighteen percent?
It's, um, the way our policy reads, it is general fund and solid waste backing out any, um, inter-fund transfers.
Okay, so what's that eighteen percent, what's the final number? What, what is it?
I rounded up to eleven, it's around ten and a half.
Yeah, I came up with ten-one. But you're sitting there looking at fifteen-five after you've backed out everything.
No, keep in mind, fifteen-five, yes, yes. Keep in mind that, um, those July twenty-nineteen debt payments every year are gonna have to be paid from the six-thirty balance.
No, I get that. So you're sitting there with fifteen-five, but the finance policy says we'd only really have to hold ten and a half. So what do we, what are we to do with the other five? How much of that goes to debt reserve? How much of that do we put for, uh, the co- school construction fund? We've gotta start talking about what, what to do with this money to be smart about it going forward. So this is a good, this is a good discussion. I mean, I'm, I'm happy. I mean, this is, this is really good news.
Just one question I had was about, um, revenue from state and federal sources that we had budgeted for was, I think, a little less than we budgeted for. Why do we think that was?
Some of that is a timing issue. Um, some of those monies will come in in July if the expenditure was through June thirtieth. Some of that is simply a timing, um, issue.
Now, you better be, we, we all better be cautious, though, the, the, the whole market's antsy right now. The whole US market is really antsy, right? Thirty-year treasuries flipped on the bond market, first time in a long time, right? Stock market is very erratic, right? We're way, we're way past the timing of a downturn, right? We're now into, what is it, we're now into year eleven. We're, we're living on borrowed time. So we've gotta decide what we do with this money so that years twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five are clearly taken care of to get the city out of any kind of economic downturn that may happen. So we're at least on the upswing coming out of it, and we still have our debt payments covered. You with me? So we can't get crazy with spending. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, and I'll say this again, with not giving the CBB money, meals and lodging taxes are up. So there is no direct link between how much money they get and what meals and lodging taxes get. Because we gave them less money and meals and to- lodging taxes went up by a quarter million dollars. So people make decisions on where to, where to eat and where to buy hotel rooms not based on the money you give CDB, right? That's a fact. So that's, again, taxpayer money, in my opinion, that is squandered, and that's a fact. So we can't do that kind of stuff continually and be a city that's financially responsible, right? When you have evidence that there's no direct link, you just can't continue to spend that money. It's not right. We got other things to do. We got computers to buy for trash trucks, we got computers to buy for police cars and other things, so... But overall, unbelievably good job.
Uh, we're very pleased with this, too. I, I will tell you that, as the city manager said when he, um, addressed council earlier, this has come about by developing a plan, getting, getting it in writing and then following that plan.
I'll just say, uh, council, I don't think, um, we give our department heads enough credit for what they do. I think it's obvious when you look at the expenditures, what they do to make sure they try to run a tight ship uh, for this city and its citizens. And it's something that we strive to do on a daily basis. And I think even last year's budget, uh, you know, we had a great year, but I think doing it two years in a row really says that what we're doing, we're doing it right. And, um, I can't guarantee that the nineteen-twenty budget, you'll see these same numbers next August because, as Councilwoman Mumpower said, and I talked about it this morning, the economy is iffy right now. But I do think we, uh, have an appropriate budget, and I think we'll be, we'll be fine. I don't think we'll see a shortfall if the economy does take a, a hit. But we're a long ways from out of the woods. We can see the light, but we've still got a long ways to go.
Well, you tell the department heads, "Thank you." Cause if they keep holding the reins like they did on this, and we keep doing our job as a council, this city's gonna be out of trouble in four years, right? You just gotta keep holding the reins hard.
Yeah, I think this is really great, and you know, kinda like Mr. Mumpower said, this is, this is evidence of a lot of hard work that you all put in, and previous councils had to make some tough decisions, and this is, this is just really good for the city, and, and I do hope this is a big news story tomorrow, looking at somebody in the front row.
Does the rating agencies know this? They don't, they haven't seen these numbers.
They knew preliminary, preliminary June 30th, 2019 numbers. They won't, they will look at the June 30th audit for their final numbers, but, but they clearly know that the city is on a positive trend.
I, I think a lot of times you'll hear the phrase, you know, sometimes you'll say, we're out, we're not out of the woods, we're out of the woods. You'll hear the phrase, we've turned a corner. I always feel like that's the first half of a sentence, you have to figure out, we've turned a corner, and then what? You know, we turned a corner, and then it's smooth sailing, we turn a corner, we hit a wall, you know, what happens after we turn the corner? I think we've turned a corner, and what happens next is on us, you know, is, is, do we continue growing these numbers with financially responsible means that we've done before, or what happens? So, so thank you all again for, for the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna say it one more time. I mean, this, this city has done a great job. I mean, we're doing what we need to be doing, but that presentation is confirmation that we can pay cash for that building and get it behind us.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that. I was gonna bring that up, so.
All right, very good. Next item is the consent agenda. What do we wanna do here?
I move that we adopt consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion is made to adopt by Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Wingard. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.